No, I'm certain that Geneva is more up to date on these plans than we are. So I think we're just gonna go, she says she'd be a few minutes. So I think we're just gonna go ahead and get started. And then she can just catch up when she gets here.
And I just have to say, we've been just kind of moving across the board. And so we submitted this preliminary plat application, but even as we did that, we still are working through some of the design issues.
Yeah, and I saw the engineering report too. Came through. I think we're fine.
Well, I can, yeah, get started then. That's what I have with you guys. So I think we introduced ourselves to most of you guys, but I'm Mitch Holland. I'm one of the principals at Sony Real Estate Development. I'm with the developer on the project.
And I'm Brady Morris. I'm in the Civil Engineering.
I'm John Peterson with Landmark Property and Development. We're assisting with Sony in the project.
We're excited to be here, guys. As Mayor knows, this project's been a long time in the works, about three years. So we are finally at a point where we're pushing forward with a preliminary plat. I think it's a fairly dialed-in site plan. But I think before we get to the plat and any, you know, technical infrastructure-related questions, we just wanted to take you guys through the site plan and kind of the vision for the development. So feel free to interject with any questions as we kind of run through this. But this is meant to just give more of a vision for what we want to do out here. So again, with Sony Real Estate Development is our company. We've been fortunate to do quite a few of these larger-scale mixed-use developments in the last five years. We're actually underway with one of these projects that's similar in scope in Logan. So we picked up the Cash Valley Mall about two years ago. We've now fully demolished that mall. That's anchored by Target, who's going to be starting construction there within vertical within about two weeks. So that'll be exciting. And then we've got a bunch of apartments and then some pad sites up there, too. So that one was about a year and a half ahead of this project. And now we're potentially moving into Far West. So Far West Marketplace takes a spot a little bit north of here. I'm gonna close my laptop because I'm getting confused. But what we'd ideally like to do, and I might point over Chris, the site plan here is a little bit bigger than this. But our intent is to assemble all the various parcels, which has been a process over these last two years. We want to anchor the site with a new market, 128,000 square foot retailer. We don't know which retailer that is, but I think everybody has a decent idea of it. But they can position on the south end. North of that, we call it a junior box line. But there would be additional retail space with users varying between, you know, 5,000 feet to 30,000 feet. So that would go directly north of our anchor box retailer. And then we intend to do new commercial retail paths along the front edge for, I believe, 1900 plus road. So that'd be a mix of restaurants, banks, Freddie units, all sorts of businesses on that site. And then directly north of that, our company develops quite a bit of multifamily. So we then self-develop a multifamily on a lot. It's shown as lot one, I think it's got a different number on the delivery plat with the multifamily on this component of it. So one of the pieces that's just required from the plat, the coordination on this project is the new plot. And these buildings. So there's been some gymnastics between City of Far West, Pleasant View, Lieber County. But I think we're getting close to kind of bringing all those various pieces together. The new road would connect from 1740 and the four-by-four intersection. It would wrap around with 27.5 north, that north by 1900, and then back to 27.75 north. So this has required some coordination, how those couple landlords on the north end. Fortunately, everybody didn't realize I should have it to work with. And we're excited to be hopefully kicking that off somewhat soon. So again, that's generally the site plan. We do have a couple elevations that we wanted to show you guys for how we could ultimately see this thing kind of unfold. So I think this is a shot looking, this would be looking south. So these are the retail paths along the interstate. You got that junior box lineup that I mentioned to you folks, and then the anchor box retailer on the far south end. This would be looking north, kind of from the intersection. So we'd have the anchor box retailer on the south, again, that junior box lineup, and then the pads along the front edge. It's another shot of the anchor box lineup. And then here's one that would capture what the multifamily could look like up on that north end. We did want to provide a little bit more details on the anchor box elevations. So these are not colorized. They would have some color to their building, but they are a little bit sensitive as that tends to kind of give away who they are. So it could be red, it could be blue. We don't know. But these are the actual elevations, maybe orange of what this building will be. But they are non-colorized. So I promise you, there'll be a little bit more of a pop to this when it actually gets constructed. But this is their new 128,000 square foot prototype. It's similar to a few others that are being built in the market, but it's a really great-looking store. So we're excited to have that as the anchor. This would be the signage. So our intent would be to place one large development sign, let's sign it A, which that would be position. I think it's, I think we got it marked out here on the site map. We go up on the, we go up on the north end. So this would have the anchor retailer on the top, and then we would want to put on various tenants for that pad. Signage B would be for the anchor box retailer on their lot. And then sign C would be the various outlots for each of these users. Sign C could change based on whatever those users want to do. I mean, Chick-fil-A has their own site, and then that has its own site. Whoever it is, right, would have their own site. But this is meant to show what those signs would look like and where they'd be placed. I think here is a, probably not gonna be able to see it very well, but this will feed more into our preliminary plat. This is a more dialed-in view of what the site plan will actually look like. Are we able to zoom in at all on this?
Sure.
So this is a more detailed site plan of the anchor box retailer. Gets more into their loading, their parking lot, than how access would work in and around their sign. So any technical questions on this, Brady will be more equipped to answer those. Anything hard, Brady can answer. And then again, the outlots, which you'll see on our preliminary plat. We're leaving the outlots as one big lot right now. So that's lot six. But as we go to develop these outlots, we will final plat those into individual ones. We're just not at a point, we're in discussions with five or six users. But we don't want to final plat those without having those deals in place. Otherwise, we just tend to be going back through the process again and again and again. So right now, that outlot is just, it's one big lot, but that will be subdivided once we have future users on the lot.
But it could be subdivided in different ways depending upon.
Yes, exactly.
Could be that many or fewer with larger lots.
Exactly.
If we get, you know, multiple sit-down restaurants, it'd be much more parking, then you need a bigger lot for.
Exactly. So I think what we have shown here, this is representative of the various users that we're in discussions with. But you're absolutely right, this could change in the smaller or larger lot sizes. But I think that's something that hopefully within the next, I'd say, six to 12 months, we'll be in a position to come back through and final plat those lots up there. Let's see if I can zoom back out.
On that, the southwest corner on your, it says, it shows parking, but it says stacking.
What? So this is the.
What do you mean by that?
This would be for the drive-thru. So for our anchor retailer, they are extremely sensitive of what goes out in front of their store, as you can imagine. And part of that is oftentimes, you're gonna see high-volume users go in front of their store. They want to make sure that the stacking in the drive-thru is sufficient, so that cars aren't backing into the drive aisles, backing onto the road. So that's what you're seeing here with the stacking, is you want to make sure there's enough vehicles that can enter into their drive-thru and not start backing into the access road or into these spots. I think this is a further detailed site plan.
It's more for the juniors.
Yeah, for the junior box of what we would envision in here. Right now, we are in discussions with probably 10 different users for that site. So this is something that we'd hope to be able to roll out in conjunction with the anchor box retailer. But this does show a little bit more detail with these prototypes of these various users, what that could look like. You want to talk about the Maverick access?
Yes. So I guess, just in coordination, maybe talk about project phasing and modifications to existing site conditions. Because of course, the first phase of the project will be to build the access road through the project. And we'll have to realign the roadway on the eastern side of the Maverick and then modify their accesses as well. Because currently, basically there, we showed turn arrows coming into their site. That's actually the opposite way of how they're currently showing or existing on their site. So we're proposing to flip that around and basically modify their access points. So that it works in the opposite direction of where they're currently, how they're currently functioning.
We've been working with their real estate team, Mavericks, and we think we have a drawing that they find acceptable. And Brady is incorporating it into his engineering drawings. We'd still have to document it with them.
Very similar to this, there's some slight differences, but very similar to this.
Is there any concerns about moving the dump station from where it is to on the other side?
Dump station's right against the store.
I know it is, but on this diagram, it's against the road.
That's, this is their drawing.
This is their. This is where they asked us to.
It wasn't their drawing.
We gave them 20 other ones, and they didn't like it. We proposed a couple of different layouts for the RV dump, and this is where they're.
Oh, okay.
Get away from their picnic tables.
I think that's the last page.
Yes. So maybe a little bit more into the technical design. It's, sewer's fairly shallow here. We're really trying to avoid a sewer lift station. So that's really the driver of the elevation of the big box store. We're setting that elevation based on getting sewer service to that, which will mean that we'll have to build up the site a little bit, probably three to five feet from what existing elevations are. So you're gonna see the site elevation raised quite a bit, not just on the big box either, but throughout the site.
Will the geotech study influence that, since that isn't completed?
Yes, yeah, so we've gotten basically a finalized geotechnical study. And basically, what they've indicated is that there's some poor soil conditions on the site.
No surprise.
And they're requiring that basically we have our standard pavement section, which would be typical asphalt and then road base, and then 24 inches of structural fill underneath that. So we're at a minimum of three feet of fill to basically get to the, to existing conditions wherever you have the finished sprays.
My biggest concern is the ability of Pleasant View to allow you to complete that road across the railroad property and in a mobile court. I mean, where are they at on that? Because that has to happen, or we don't have access to 2700 north.
Yeah, that definitely has to happen. And they've been for the road all along, and they did joint application of WACOG and et cetera. They're about to acquire the access to the north crossing. And the southern part, they've been waiting for the final road design internally and how it would connect. I've had meetings with UDOT on what they might want in the future on 2700 north. And it's a very dynamic process.
But the railroad company isn't an issue? I mean, getting permission to use that?
Well.
I mean, that's sort of pivotal.
Yeah. And yesterday, it's here, and we can speak to it if you would like her to.
Well, I mean, if that doesn't happen, you don't access to it somewhere.
Right, I mean, that is a do-or-die issue for us. The city, Amy may be the previous city administrator, had submitted an application to UP in July of last year. UP is a little bit slow. So last couple days, they got back to Andrea and let her know that haven't done anything on it. In fact, they're not even sure if they actually received it. But by the way, we don't think we own this land. We think we sold it in 1984. This happened yesterday at 4:00 p.m. So we are researching that. We found out that, or that deed says that Roger and Victoria Gallant purchased it in 1984. If anyone knows them, please look them up. I think that Virginia has unfortunately passed, but I think Roger is probably, is still around, and he has had some pro vote. So I haven't been able to connect with him yet. And that's why I called you earlier today.
Yeah.
Oh.
Got some personal issues.
Yeah, no worries. So that's what we learned so far. And we have a drawing from the surveyor that works with Brady on where it might be.
Yeah.
So we're desperately trying to chase all this down.
We plotted the quick claim deed that basically the transfer of property that was when the railroad company sold that property to the individual property owner. It seems to fall in line with where this crossing is. And in fact, it extends further to the north than we anticipated. Talking to my surveyor, there's always, it's an older deed, and basically there's a little bit of a gap. But he's basically saying that he feels like it should fit this property, basically the western drain property that rolls railroad corridor in covering it.
Go ahead, Andrea.
So some of the information we have is that Marymount, they have a private owned property. So we are doing title work on it and training research, and we'll back down.
Yeah.
But if Marymount actually owns it, it would be a much easier process to clean and house it.
So it's logistics rather than a wall you can't penetrate? Is that sort of what you're saying?
Pleasant View is motivated to get it done. They're not getting the benefits of the shopping center, but they're gonna get the benefits of a 2 million square foot industrial park at the more than that, Boyer and Bailey are currently not doing. So everyone's motivated, it's just that there's a lot of hoops and there's a lot of, you know, this deed to the Gallants didn't show up in title. It's possible in 84, nobody recorded this deed. And we're just having to chase it all down.
Pleasant View having no problem evacuating the trailer court?
Well, they.
Or that portion of it.
Within the last two weeks with the owner of the trailer court. And they are in discussions to do a little land swap on a piece that the city owns for that acreage that we need for the road right away. And please feel free to correct me anytime.
And then this is my protocol called after we sold.
Yes.
Because the other piece of property was purchased with the way of funds, and this is the purchase of the way of funds. I have to use the bill of loan on the property center.
Yeah.
To make those slots. And so we have to connect the second engine that worked involved that.
Okay, awesome.
So we are.
Yeah. So it's, this project hasn't been without its challenges. But we are all after getting it all chased down.
So here, you're, it's suggesting that you want to start working as soon as possible. I'm assuming you had access it from the north rather than the.
Well, we can't open it without this connection.
Okay, so this has to happen before. Well, I, because it sounded like you were gonna do that before this, and I thought, I don't know how that's gonna happen.
We have to plat the Far West being Far West, and we have to plat the road portion in Pleasant View that's in Pleasant View. And ideally, they would acquire the land, the plats will all be done, and you put it all in a bow and send bulldozers out there and bird movers. So, but we, you know, we need to move this side of the ledger officially along so that we can all get to the endpoint. And the planning process, it's a minor subdivision with Pleasant View, so we can actually be done in August. Oh, ten June, okay. Yesterday, we thought we could be done in August. Be quicker, quicker is always better.
And with our code, with preliminary approval, I mean, they can start bringing in all that dirt while the rest of this is getting figured out.
The other thing, Pleasant View's fine with the sewage arrangement in the north part of this, handling the sewage. Isn't that what this says, that it would be Pleasant View's responsibility? Because that's what I read.
Yeah.
And I wonder where that's at.
I don't know. Yeah, we just basically started our review process with them, so I don't know that I have any.
So you haven't tested the water on that, then?
We've had some.
That's terrible figures. I didn't mean that until it came out of my mouth.
Brady, can you remind me, is the big box store coming to Far West? You were very.
It is.
Yes, it's north of it, right.
Yeah, the far south retail pad and.
Yeah, the box store's not the issue, it's what's marketed.
That's right.
That's the question, right?
Yeah. Yeah. We're hoping that it's done with this. I mean, I guess if potentially we end up in a difficult situation where they won't accept it, then we'd have to look at building a sewer station.
Okay.
If we pump it back.
Yeah. I was talking with their engineer, I think what we'll have to do is work out an interlocal agreement between the cities for that connection.
It would seem so since it's on our property and we're sending the sewer in their direction.
Yeah.
If you had to use a lift station, or is our system, does it have the capacity to handle that?
Yeah, I mean, the sewer line that's on the west side of the Maverick, I think is a 12-inch pipe. So that's a pretty decent-sized sewer pipe. I don't know what goes on below that, but.
I'd have to double check, but I, we're hoping that we can work that out with Pleasant View. We don't want a lift station, right, to avoid it, so. We're hoping that works out.
Sounds like you got some issues with Western Irrigation to work out still, too.
So I had a conversation with Western Irrigation on the way up here, actually. We talked through a couple of things. We had gotten some information of how to reroute the system and what we needed to do. And it sounded like that that may have been incorrect information. So my conversation over on the phone just less than an hour ago, we basically talked through what needs to be done. And it's not a difficult process, but they just wanted to make sure that they were involved. They felt like they were being bypassed, and the city was kind of dictating how things were going to be done on the Western Irrigation system. And they wanted to say, listen, you guys have to do what we want, not what the city's telling you to do.
They sent out an email at 4:45.
Yeah, he mentioned to me that he was gonna do that. He basically said as well, we're willing to work with you guys. We're not basically looking to stop the process or create any problems. We think that there's a solution here. We just want to make sure that it's done in a way that we want it to be done.
In lieu, are they willing to service you at all? Do they have the ability to service you guys for secondary water at all?
So we're exploring a few different options for secondary services. Bonavista basically is saying that they're only going to provide culinary water to this, the project. Western irrigation is one option. And then there's two other irrigation companies that we're considering, looking at, that they would have to annex this property into them. If we go with the Western Irrigation option, that basically would be a private system that we would develop just basically utilizing the water shares that we have from them.
I do like the design, I have to say that.
I read at a point where we were talking about traffic cities and stuff for this. Because I would imagine, drawing that many cars, we're gonna see a change. I know what we have public hearing about re, or changing the general plan to allow for rezoning. There was a lot of concern, I mean, there were a number of concerns, but one of them was, you know, this area is already overburdened with traffic.
So maybe pan down with the map to down to the southern end, and we can look at basically what's potentially proposed on 2700 north and 1740 west. So there has been a traffic study that was done by Hales Engineering. They're a very reputable company. Basically, they submitted that traffic study to UDOT. I think that Far West has reviewed that as well. And they have requirements for basically storage and stacking at the intersections that this proposal is posing to match for that. We basically are proposing double-left turn lanes going out, and we're coordinating with UDOT to basically figure out the process of improvements on 2700 north. And they have a consultant that's basically going through a planning process. They're basically adding a raised median on 2700 north to restrict basically left-turn movements out.
To the traffic light.
Yeah, into those retail paths, the Maverick and other retail paths that are along the front edge there. And trying to figure out the timing and process of when that will go in, and the improvements on 2700 north and what those need to be, in coordination with this development, to make sure it's adequate in size to service this.
So we've got, it sounds like we've got all the right people involved.
Yeah.
The only other thing, and I don't know, this is so much a concern for you guys. We probably need to be looking at our signage code. Even the taller sign you had, I would imagine is probably gonna be taller than 25 feet. And we have a 25-foot limit right now.
Well, we need to consider, because this should be in a corridor of 2700, which is 80 foot.
In this corridor.
Yeah.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
So we're just gonna make sure it encompasses, but it should be covered in that 2700.
It's in old fashioned, we have a restriction on types of signs that our city has up on this road. We're not really in code. So anyway, we probably want to revisit.
Yeah.
We probably want to revisit signetism.
Yeah, that's fine, but they should be good for the 2700.
Yeah, specifically noted that so far from 2700 near the freeway. Because we did that in order to allow, at the time, bird came to put in that monstrosity that goes that way to the moon. Whereas it's not supposed to be that way. Yeah, I have to say that going through this project process has been so many moving parts and so dynamic. Like, I mean, basically, I appreciate the cities and their willingness to work with us because it's not an easy task, because we're, I know that there was some planning on 1740 west to accommodate this, but you've got existing, one of the existing trailers that's there is basically going to have to be demoed in order to allow for this.
Move.
Yeah.
They are mobile.
They are mobile.
Accommodated.
You don't have to demo it.
Move, move.
We don't care. Yeah. So how, what's the, what's the plan for going around the north end, past the pond, over to Hartland?
Over to the winery.
Over by the winery, yeah.
So you can see the road layout there. We have been working with the Bailey and Boyer Company and Ocean Star Properties as the property owner on the northeastern corner there, to basically acquire property from them and their.
Number four on the plat?
Yes. I think that's right. They, and it's a little technical, and basically why that one's a lot in the subdivision versus the Boyer-Bailey property. It's basically the fact that the Ocean Star property was a lot in the subdivision. So we don't want to sever their property and basically make them just be a legal description versus an actual planted lot. And so we're proposing to put them in the subdivision so that their lot is still a lot, even though we're taking. And so we're proposing to put them in the subdivision so that their lot is still a lot, even though we're taking some of the property. Whereas the Bailey and Boyer Property was already just a legally described parcel. And so we're basically carving off a portion of that and it'll still be the same.
They're saying that'll be probably easier without out, if you wanna go up and around and down the river by it to the stockpile rather than, rather than the other out onto twenty-seven hundred. If people are willing to walk around.
Yeah, I think people will figure things out as the, as the project gets going. I mean, I know that the traffic study kind of takes that into account of how, how things will work. And I don't know all the nuances of how those traffic studies work, but, um, there is a lot of storage and stacking on that proposed access that we're proposing on, onto twenty-seven hundred north as well.
And the traffic study took into account the occupancy and the apartments and all of that, right?
Yeah.
I do like your li- your layouts, but I'd like to see a little farther down the line with the water company and the sewer.
So we did get, um, comments from, uh, Bonavista. Uh, they were, they were actually fairly minor. Um, but they are not, we were working on incorporating those with these, uh, plan updates. So the plans that you have, um, really don't incorporate those, but they're, they honestly, they're fairly minor. Basically, it was just talking about minimum cover requirements, separation from other utilities, labeling. Um, where they, they're basically saying that they don't want to own and maintain the water systems inside the private developments. So we need to label those as private, but their, their comments were fairly minor.
I disagree. However, I'd like to see it with that will serve, making a lot happier.
They did send a letter that they have the capacity to serve. They're, they're awaiting the revised, uh, documents as well.
Yes, yeah. Sewer, Bonavista, Western, you know, those are three major players.
Right.
As we're all aware with the heat and the drought in Utah, water is a commodity.
Yep, and I think that's why Bonavista's made the decision that they're not going to provide a irrigation series.
But that's just why I would like to see it a little farther down the line personally.
Second question, the revamping of the pond, is that part of your doing or is that?
That's Pleasant View.
Pleasant View's parts.
And that's owned by Weaver County, so any, any modifications or improvements that are done, we'd have to go through Weaver County.
What's the grand idea of ones, right?
We tried, yeah.
Those orange paths that are down like, there's like a walking trail.
Oh, it's just highlighting them.
Some more trails going around.
Yeah, it was an offer to the county that they, they didn't receive well.
Yeah.
We're still trying to work with them because we, we're looking at options for our irrigation service still. And, um, one potential consideration is to basically use their pond for a storage source for our irrigation water. But, um, we have basically a phone call into them to discuss it, but, uh, we haven't heard response back.
How about your stormwater and the, and the requirements for the state retention? Are you gonna be able to meet that with any trouble? I mean, you got a lot of asphalt.
Yeah.
A lot of rough surface, so.
Our proposal is basically, um, we have proposed basically stubbing in a, a storm rain pipe to each of the retail lots along the frontage. And that the rear lots, the, uh, larger boxes and multifamily would have to do their own detention system and then discharge into the western drain.
So again, that western drain comes in to become a key factor, whether they'll let you discharge or not.
Yeah, and I did have that conversation with Clint on the phone.
And I just, like I said, I just, these are all things, you know.
Yeah, no, they're, they're tech- technical details that need to be figured out.
Sure. Sometimes those technical details hold things up for a long time.
So there's no above ground detention at all, routes into the drainage system?
Uh, so where, where we've only designed the improvements for the big box store, uh, at this point, we're proposing an underground detention system on the northern end of their site. That's what we're, value of commercial real estate is so high that it's really hard to set aside property.
Yeah.
Um, one proposal is on the far north end of this site where the Sharp's Bin, Sharp Bin Property as they refer to it. Lot one. Is that it just narrows up so far on the north end that potentially we could look at designing a detention system there.
Okay. And the drainage works, I mean.
Yeah.
It's where it goes naturally.
Yeah, everything's, everything's flowing to the north now.
Given logistics, if you got all the permissions you need, when would your planning horizon say you might start doing something?
It's really gonna come down to this Pleasant View issue that is critical. It's, it's absolutely critical. So I think once we have the comfort on that, assuming that we're able to get through the entire process here, we'd really like to start moving there this year. And that's, that is absolutely our intent. Um, but at the same time, we gotta know that we're gonna have access. Anchor's gonna wanna know that they have access. Tends to be kind of important for those guys. So that'll be a critical piece.
And you're working through UDOT approvals? I just like to see those things in place, but that's just me.
Yeah. I think we do too. We're just kind of at a, to be totally transparent with you guys, a pretty critical spot where we are juggling six underlying contracts. So some of the stuff is just gonna have to go into, and it's just, I'm letting you know where we're at. Um, but you're not wrong, all those things will have to get buttoned up, but we are at a spot where we need to hopefully make some progress here across the board.
I didn't realize who you were actually, Greg. I looked at your name. So, and you retired from the county now?
I'm retired.
Okay, so Greg used to work at Salt Lake County. Basically, he was engineering review for Salt Lake County for years.
Why do his questions always very specific? Very, yeah.
Kind of knows our stuff. Geez. And Greg likes to give people hard time too, so.
We welcome all questions.
Who did your geotechnical study?
GSH.
I haven't spoken any better.
Well, I think they're a thing to remember tonight as planning commission. This is subdivision only, so they will be back for complete layouts, infrastructure per set, per site, detention, all those lingering. And it, yeah, there you go, that's it, it's preliminary. So. Yeah. And final letters, final everything.
Logistics.
This is quite a juggling act you guys are engaged in, huh?
It seems like it's been started as a slower process, but everything from my perspective, we've just done multiple projects. I've got actually four projects, um, very similar to this going on right now and it all seems to be coming together now.
I believe it's Brady's anniversary, so if he can be released, you probably can, cause I see his sweet wife in the audience over there.
Think here, most important stuff. You're even here.
Hey, imagine where your comments would have been if he wasn't here.
I can imagine.
His job would have been on the line.
It would've been the same questions.
I know. If someone was here to answer, yeah, exactly, no answers. Any other questions?
Is there any questions on the, the plat document?
Did you guys have any, yeah, and you can pull that up, who has the?
He's got. Do you have groundwater issues?
You know, it's funny, um, when the geotechnical testing was done, groundwater was fairly deep.
Good, that was why I asked the question, cause that's, historically, that's usually the big issue in far west when they do a geotech is they hit.
Well, and, and it could be that the, it's so clay that basically the water was just deep and, and it.
Couldn't penetrate up.
Yeah.
But you know, the odd thing is on that Bailey site too, they have no groundwater like that either. It was dry as clay or dry as dust. Oddly enough, you would think it wasn't.
It's an expansive place.
Oh, I didn't know that was expansive, expansive soils. That's when the hardest part of this whole project is the soil is fair, it's incredibly expensive.
Yeah. There's ways to, there's ways to treat them.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we know, we think we've got that figured out, but it's expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the reason I ask is because if you're gonna go with underground detention, you know.
It'll have to be a lining system and it won't be a retention system basically.
It'll be detention, it was. Expect, well, if you get approval from the Western Irrigation to discharge, you'll have to find out what CFS are gonna lie to discharge to.
Yeah, I wondered about the capacity of drainage ditch or what you're discharging them to.
Well, the, the western drain through that area, the irrigation company doesn't have anything saying. They have the union ditch that goes through off the south end of the project, but that's just a drain at that point. They don't contain.
No, that's true.
So I think through that stretch, it's in Pleasant.
Weaver County's jurisdiction.
So I think we accordingly Pleasant View's part is the connections to the western drain.
You'll still have a CFS that you're gonna discharge.
Yeah.
Cause you don't wanna overload the system. Or what's theirs existing.
But anything with, I think anything Western Irrigation on the group will, that will be, is they're gonna use their water and then also whatever do you.
Yeah, and I think it'd be limited by what goes underneath the freeway as well.
I wanna talk about the plat guys while we got Brady here. It's Brady, I'll let you drive this if you.
Yeah, I mean, um, you've got multiple property owners, as was previously mentioned. Basically, you've got, um, you can see on the cover page, there's multiple signers here, multiple acknowledgements. Basically, you would have to get approval, um, and sign, um. And that's just part of the nature of severing all these properties. We looked at it a couple of different ways, but everybody seems to be on board, um, to move the process forward.
You're right, I still address, but that's unusual.
Yeah.
Now, this is a lot better looking than that hot, foggy, puzzled pieces it is right now.
Absolutely, that's the lot that threw me off.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's why we have it as a, as a lot is because it currently is a lot in a subdivision versus.
It's just meets and bounds.
Yeah, well, the Boyer, Bailey property meets and bounds, but this is actual, uh, actually a lot, so.
Yeah, that's a real lot, yeah.
It is the winery, isn't it?
Yep, that's right.
I think we should annex it.
Annex the winery.
Come on.
She's playing on a different team now, so you know, what would have been a good idea last year is not a good idea this.
I can still give her a hard time. It'd be much easier to pick up my wife's ID from over here.
We gotta cut you loose, I think we're done, huh?
Yeah. You're free to go. You guys can sit in the audience for a second and then maybe we all wanna touch base. Five minutes, whatever, general plan items.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
And I'm sure we'll continue to work, work through issues.
Happy anniversary, by the way.
Yes, hopefully you're taking your wife somewhere nice.
How many years?
Twenty-six.
Okay.
Congratulations. There's a nice restaurant over the winery.
Maybe you can buy it and work.
Okay, do you? No, you're fine. Um, general plan stuff, cause we're really thinking like forward of schedule wise. So we'll have.
Well, we can pick up where we left off, we don't have that much left to cover.
Well, and, and I don't really wanna get into the document, I just wanna make sure there aren't any to do tasks that we need to do because we really have one meeting in July and then we're right on the twenty-fourth, so we're only seeing each other once in July.
Yeah.
So I just wanna, just wanna make sure, um, and Matt, you're free to go, okay? Anyone that wants to go really can go.
Seriously?
Yeah, I know, right? Um, so I just wanna make sure, thinking the next month, you know, ahead, you know, are there anything you guys need for us, general plan wise? Anything that can be done?
How far do we get on that?
We are beginning on chapter five, transportation.
I didn't bring that even with me, so.
I'm gonna have to do a lot with it because I was looking at this.
No, you're good, I just wanna make sure if you, the people that are heading up the update to the general plan, do you need anything from us?
Not really. I did, I did talk, I did inquire about the trails and it is on the active transportation plan. So we don't have to do anything with it.
Okay.
The only thing that I'd propose on, when we do this new and again, or when we redo it, is like the, it says active transportation plan.
Thank you, Matt.
I think we need to put a link there. So any place where it has, you know, see this, you know, this area or this particular code.
To the map?
Yeah, no, just, yeah, just, yeah, maybe just a link.
Or a link to the, whatever the plan is.
Whatever the plan is, whether the code or something. It's like reference trails in active transportation plan, look at current, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is wherever it says it has, uh, references and ordinance or something like that, let's put a link there.
Yeah.
Because to me, if I was looking at this, I wouldn't wanna go tripping around through the, cause it's hard enough for me to find it. Let alone anyone else.
I didn't see the eighty foot sign permit that was right in front of me when I was looking through.
Yeah, and that's the thing is that, uh, anyway, so that's the only thing that, that I can. We talked about it at the park meeting the other, last week, a few weeks ago. And Ken showed it, showed me where it was on plat. And so we're all, we're all covered on that, so. Anyway, but no, I, we've only got, we've only got, I think, five, six and seven. And chapter five is transportation circulation. It's only maybe one or two pages, community facilities. Uh, we need to maybe one, one page, I mean, there's just, the rest of it's just small potatoes. Yeah. But Connor volunteered his wife to take pictures.
That's so nice of you.
That's, that's, that's kind of the edit.
Know it.
We'll drive around far west.
That's the editing of the document.
Yeah, that's the editing.
Then we've gotta go through some serious review of the future land use map.
Right.
And, uh, the transportation map. And, uh, I, I suggested we can do it one of two ways. We can have our first preliminary discussion, then eventually I think we need to have a joint meeting with the city council.
Yeah, and I've got, I've got everything here marked for the city council.
So, and that's something that's gonna take some dialogue.
Yeah.
This is just cleaning it up, updating photos, updating.
Language.
Language in it. And I, what I would suggest, we redline it and get all that done to where we think we've got those changes we need. And then settle in on the, the, the discussion.
Eat the potatoes of it, right.
So July, I think it's fourteenth, July fourteenth meeting, do you wanna have for that to finish the red lines on the document?
I would say, let's get rid of, and, and anybody that wants to read it, if there's anything you think.
Yeah.
Should be changed, modified, whatever. We're just talking about the document itself, not the deep, not the, uh, the heavyweight planning of future land use and transportation and that sort of.
In August to do a joint work session with city council?
I can set that up, yeah, we can set that up. Cause let, let's just finish it up and then I will, if you'll send me the rest of the red lines and then I will make the changes or whatever. And then we can review it one more time and then.
Yeah.
In preparation for that meeting, it would be useful if all of you look at that future land use and if you've got things you would like to comment or throw on the table, let's come with ideas, okay?
So that gives us the next sixty days per se. And then once the joint work session is done, then we can update all maps.
Right.
All exhibits and then have a final document.
Get a more current version of the zoning map.
You were going to email.
The one that I pulled up on the master plan was quite dated.
For a while.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Matt meth, but actually there's a current one that is live with GIS. So it's changing as we change.
But it'd be useful to have that when we're talking about future land use, looking at our actual.
Email Matt for that PDF version. He can take that from GIS and he can make it into a PDF.
Oh, the zoning map?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'll write that out, I don't remember that.
For the joint work session, we'll need some large copies of the current and to the future.
So we're gonna finish up the rest of this on the fourteenth.
Yeah.
And then, do we wanna go over the red lines? The first, the, the first one in, in August?
Yeah, maybe sometime.
And then, and then set up a joint meeting with the city council thereafter?
Yeah.
Okay, because I feel like that, my, my impression was that we were gonna finish this up and then have a joint city council.
No, the, the city, what I hope you could do is we can show the city council our red line version.
Well, that's true.
And that's easy. And then we can, in addition to that, have our discussion about future. And that's easy, and then we can, in addition to that, have our discussion about future land.
Okay, so we'll have one last meeting.
If they've got any heartburn about any of the redlining, we correct that, and then that's done.
I like that better.
Then suddenly the redlining isn't there anymore. We've got the new version, and we're dealing with the maps.
And I would think it's like, half an hour to go over the red lines on the plan, and then half an hour to go over the maps with them would be like, probably what I imagine, unless we need two meetings. If you think it's an hour, then an hour.
Well, we take, get the red lines out of the way, because the maps, it depends upon how many ideas they have about future land use.
Yeah.
I mean, we could, we could bog down on that.
Should we, I wonder if we can, i- if we met.
This needs to be middle, end of August, September.
Well, what I'm, what I'm thinking is if, if we redline it, and then maybe we go over, verify everything the first meeting in August, and then maybe set it up with the city council to have the meeting at five-thirty on their night.
Yeah, so it's kind of mid-August, in, mid to end.
Here's what I would suggest. I, I would suggest we, as a planning commission, review the parks map and the, the, this transportation map and do our own, and, and do that before we have the joint meetings.
Let's get through.
So we show, okay, this is how we've changed it from the previous. There's no sense for what, not having that done.
Let's get through July's meeting and August's meeting, and then, yeah, don't like go to the.
Oh, I'm not, I'm gonna let you set that up. I'll let you put the bell on the cap. Um, so email Matt Robertson to get a PDF copy of the zoning maps.
Most recent setting.
Most recent, okay. Okay, I'll sit and get that up.
So then, next meeting, we'll finish that, and then hopefully first of August, we can do maps to update them. And then, when you guys feel ready, that we're ready to have a joint session.
And last time, we had two subcommittees that did the parks and the, the road maps.
I just don't know that there's that much left to do in them that we.
Well, the parks, you gotta tweak it a little bit, cause there's, there's some updating, yeah, well, and you gotta change the design on the church.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but I mean, that's, that would be, we could do that as a.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I don't know that you need, but we can assess that when the maps come out and say.
Then could I suggest, as a planning commission, all of you spend some time looking at the parks map and the roadmap, so that when we meet, if you see any things that you think need to be changed, let's make those changes as a preliminary to the joint meeting.
Right. I think some of those parked maps need to be revised a little bit.
No, that's what I'm saying.
We got massive.
Those will be the maps you need to print off for the work sessions. In larger formats. You could even do an eleven-by-seventeen, so everyone has their own if you wanted, but it would be nice to have one.
So get that from, uh, Matt as well.
You can just.
We can print our own.
They can print those.
Oh, you got, okay.
Like, that size would be perfect.
Okay.
That feels like not a twenty-four by thirty-six.
I'll, I'll work with.
A little more square.
And get that, and and have that ready.
That's twenty-four by thirty-eight.
Have that ready for our next meeting.
We got a nice big.
Yeah, just in case, make sure.
So parked maps.
Twenty-four by thirty-six.
Yeah, twenty-four by thirty-six.
I'll work with Lindsay on that.
Let's not forget the public.
Yeah, then after it's all done.
Right.
Plus public hearing.
Do we want all the maps?
Change all the.
Instead of just the parks map? Do you want all the maps of twenty-four? All miles?
Mayor, would you, my, my concept is we would get our preliminary version of it and then have a public hearing, not at that point say, okay, here's the changes. Here are ideas, here's where we've gone from what it was previous, and have a.
You want all the maps?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we got that in before we start saying we approve.
Gotcha.
That's never happened before.
We've never got the car before the horse.
Never. We want to give the public their chance for review.
Okay, perfect. That's all needed.
Okay.
Time for the pictures.
Sure, we'll probably end up giving it to Geneva, but.
This one's easy. All you need to do, they're all lined up there. So number four, you can just pull up when that's number two, three, four. There you go. But you can just use that one if there's questions when we get to that, but that's the only thing on. Thank you. Okay, guys, you ready?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. We're gonna start with a pledge from Darren and a prayer from Luke, if you would, or Lyle, if you would all stand, please.
Please repeat the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we come before thee as we, at this time, as we begin this, this city meeting, this planning commission meeting, and please help us to be able to discuss those things which are necessary and pertinent to the citizens of this community. We're grateful for all that we have, unless our families hold away, we say the same things as Jesus Christ.
Okay, first up, public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment? Yeah. Thank you. That's very out of line, but that's okay. I'll let it slide tonight. Um, if there are none, we have a report from city council. Please.
I hope this isn't too long, because we didn't take that long to do all of this. Um, we met last week, the nineteenth. Uh, again, there were no public comments in our meeting. I gave a brief report of the planning commission, for the planning commission, um, and then, uh, we went on to approve a conditional use permit for our twenty-six-hundred-square-foot accessory building for Jenny Astle. We, uh, reviewed and tabled a conditional use permit for a thirty-one-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot accessory building uh, for Tavon Rose, based upon his request for variance on the height. Apparently, he did not wanna bring the height of the building down, and we suggested that he get on your agenda for tonight, but apparently he didn't make it.
Well, I'll wait till you're done.
So, um, I don't know where that's at, but, uh, I would imagine that's gonna come back at us for that reason. We opened a public hearing to discuss the adjustments to the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget. There were no concerns, and the council closed the hearing and approved the adjustments. Uh, we then opened another public hearing to discuss the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, budget. Um, there was some discussion regarding a need to provide, uh, sidewalk or other accommodations that will affect those students who are now no longer going to be bussed in that one part of our city where the Weaver School District has canceled that bus route. Cody indicated that there should be enough money, uh, to cover those funds, and that'll be covered a little bit later in my report on mayor's conversations as well. Uh, we then pub, closed that public hearing and approved the proposed budget for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. Um, Cody then presented the council with a new certified tax rate. In case you're interested in know, in what that is, it's point zero-zero-zero-three-two-seven. I don't know if you understand this or not, but that tax rate adjusts depending on, you know, we have a set amount that we're guaranteed from taxes, and because of values going up or down, the tax rate adjusts accommodate for that dollar figure. So it's not like we're going out and getting more money, or less, depending on the case. Let's see, the council then approved that tax rate, uh, of point zero-zero-zero-three-two-seven. So the council then opened another public hearing to discuss the amendment to the consolidated fee schedule. Uh, the amendments were required basically to bring the city into compliance, uh, with current state code and be consistent with our normal process. Uh, there was nothing extraordinary about that. So we closed that public hearing with no comment and, uh, approved the ordinance addressing those amendments to consolidated fee schedule. The council opened again another public hearing to discuss an ordinance covering compensation increases for city officials. Uh, not officials, but officers. Uh, it was made clear that that wasn't to give the mayor or the city council a raise. This is basically like attorney, auditor, judges, things of that nature that are administrative officers in the city. Uh, there was no discussion, the hearing was closed, and the council approved the ordinance uh, addressing the compensation increase for city officers. Uh, Cody then presented to the city, uh, council the fraud risk assessment that we received from the state auditor's office. We weren't as, quite as high as we'd like to see, but we're progressing very much. Uh, we're not, we don't have some real serious issues, so, um, we, uh, approved, uh, that a fraud risk assessment was given to us by the state. We then reviewed a right-of-way acquisition agreement with the Ogden Cycle Association regarding four thousand, where we're, uh, doing the construction over there and widening that. They've agreed to relocate their entrance and to accommodate this widening, and they plan to block off the old one. They indicate that they feel that's a very, um, proper way to do it, and it benefits both the city and them, so the council approved that agreement for that, uh, um, right-of-way agreement. The council then set a public hearing date for July seventeenth to consider the implementation of the transportation utility fee, the TUF. So we'll see, um, if, uh, we get some public input and how people feel about that, uh. We did have a little bit of an open house, and we only had a few people that come and, and looked that over, but it, uh, we do have that information, and we'll be sharing that with the public on July seventeen. The council then discussed the need for a policy to address the establishment of a public infrastructure district as larger developments, for instance, what we've looked at today, uh, come into the, uh, the city, these larger developments, um, which could see some advantages, uh, regarding public infrastructure and funding, and, uh, the council basically approved the resolution to adopt a policy um, regarding the establishment of a public infrastructure district, so that we can address those issues if they come to us. Um, the council then voted to cancel the July third meeting to accommodate our freedom festivities. The council then reported on assignments, so we got all through that very, fairly quickly. Um, Boyd reported that the fire district will be building two new stations in the coming year. They, uh, I forget where they were at. I think one of the upper valley, but, um, they. Hooker, that's right. Um, they fill those needs in order to be able to meet, um, some of the desired timelines of, of making those calls that they make. They definitely need those two additional stations, so we'll see those coming online. Uh, he also, um, reported that they, the city has been able to retain the senior, senior center director as a full-time employee to help fill the gap created by Andrea's departure. That kinda made me feel a little more comfortable, because now we, we do have some experience and some help there to kinda fill that gap a little bit. It'll be a learning process for everyone, but, uh, we're comfortable with that, so we're glad to see that happen. Uh, Bob reported on the continuing progress of the CERT program. Didn't realize how much, uh, other areas had developed, so there's been a lot of work involved in that, and, and that's continuing process. He also reported or expressed his concerns regarding this school district's decision to drop that bus on the north end of town, um, regarding the impact that those kids are gonna have trying to find a safe way to get to and from their homes to school and back. So, the mayor reported, uh, that he has, uh, met with the mayor of Plain City, and between the two cities, we're fairly comfortable we'll be able to find, uh, some resolution and any, whether it's sidewalks or or at least a carved path where these kids can get in there and, and not have to worry about dodging speeding traffic. So, uh, hopefully that'll be taken care of. Um, he also is involved in many, many meetings. This man's been a busy man this past few weeks. Involving UDOT, Forest Landing Development Agreements, Legends, Preconstruction, Maverick Access, you name it, we, uh, we have a lot going on, and he's been highly involved in that and staying on top of that for us. Uh, there was no report from Katie or Dave, as they were not there and, uh, not in attendance, so we were able to do all of that and adjourn by seven-thirty-five. Any questions?
It's almost longer than your report.
One more real quick comment. Um, Boblin and I, sorry. I'm taking after the mayor here, one more. Uh, we're able to go to the Weaver Basin Water Conservancy District's tour, uh, a couple of days ago. That was a fantastic opportunity. They can be, and I think should be, a real major resource to the cities, particularly us, uh, with regards to being able to offer developers, landowners, new buyers, building permit people, some options for, uh, water conservancy. Water is always going to be an issue as, uh, the development expands in northern Utah. If you get a chance to go up to their gardens, they have over one hundred species of plants that use between fifty and seventy percent less water to maintain than currently we normally plant in our yards. One of those things they're testing right now is a new Bermuda grass, which has the texture of the Kentucky blue and uses about sixty percent less water. and uses about sixty percent less water. You water once, maybe twice a week, not every day. So some of those things, there's a lot of, um, pamphlets and stuff like that. I'm going to be bringing a lot of that and sharing it with the planning commission and the city council that we'll be able to utilize and, and have, uh, for the citizens and developers in our city. That's it. No more, one more things. Okay?
Yeah.
That'll be it.
Thank you. Okay, moving into our business items. First, actually first and only thing. Uh, recommendation to city council approval or denial of the Far West Landing Commercial Subdivision preliminary plat located at nineteen hundred west between twenty-seven seventy-five north and twenty-seven twenty-five north. Do you guys have any questions for the applicant? Does the applicant need to come up or more discussion?
I'll come up and do a presentation.
I appreciate your willingness to answer all of our questions and I'm very satisfied with the answers.
Everything looks good to me.
Okay, more discussion?
Move we recommend city council approve the.
Preliminary approval.
Preliminary approval of the Far West Landing Commercial Subdivision plat located at nineteen hundred west between twenty-seven seventy-five north and twenty-seven twenty-five north.
Motion by Jason. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lou. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. See, the work session made it much simpler for you. Okay, uh, city council, and I know you know the dates, but city council, not next week, uh, three weeks from now. So you have all the dates in your email, so. Thank you, guys. Okay, next, consent item, approval of minutes dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
My move that we approve the minutes.
Motion by Darren.
I'll second.
Second by Lyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, report on assignments. Greg?
None.
Lyle?
Okay, we had a park meeting on the seventeenth and we discussed the fee schedule for the riding arena. We already know about the U City Council market that's coming up. We discussed that. Uh, it's scheduled for, I believe, August sixteenth. And then that's pretty much all I've got, except one other cool thing is that Katie Williams put in a, a grant. Uh, the, uh, U, Utah Outdoor Recreation has a, they has offered to, a grant for the outdoor recreation planning assistance. Basically what it's designed to is, is helps us plan parks and things like that. And we received, she just sent the email out. When was it? Just not, a few days ago. Anyway, uh, we received a, where's it at now? Sorry. It's, received a grant for sixty thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. And that came through on Monday. Uh, so what it's basically doing is it's going to help us, uh, get, acquire some, and I guess correct me if I'm not, if I'm wrong, Ken, but we, it's to get an engineer and to have basically, to develop a master plan of all of our parks and everything like that within the city. So it's, it's going to look at everything in the city, not just, I mean, we're concerned right now about the Meadows Park, of course. But this is going to help us develop a master plan for all of the parks within the city. And so that is.
The timing is perfect.
The timing is perfect.
My question was timing.
Timing was spectacular, yeah. We'll use a lot of that, you know, majority of that for the Meadows, but considering working on the general plan and everything like that. And we're going to be discussing that in our next meeting on the seventeenth, so.
I have a question, Lyle.
Yes.
Will that include any future parks as well as part of that study?
Yeah, it's going to, we're going to look at everything. And it's, it's just basically, from what Katie, from what, and from her email, it says, uh, I'll just read it to you. We got a funding for a parks master plan. So it's basically the whole parks, all, everything within the city. And that's what it's designed for, so it's huge for us.
And they will take a look at what we have in our own master plan and not try to reinvent the wheel.
Right, and I think that'll help us as we're working on the general plan as well. So anyway, great news. Anyway, that's all I've got.
Hi, Lou?
Nothing.
Uh, Darren?
Nothing today.
Jason?
Uh, I don't, I think I gave my update on traffic last time, so.
Connor?
Nope.
I don't have anything either, so. Okay, there's nothing else. Do we have a last motion?
A move we adjourn.
Motion by Lou. Second by Greg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Did anybody ever object?
What?
Does anybody ever object?
I know, that's why I don't even ask. Like, is there any objections?
Yes.
Yes, I want to stay here.
Do we have more either?
Yes, more really.
He's twenty-two, he's two pounds.
Oh, my word.
Yeah, till now, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Day through the tenth?